We will continue with our agenda. We did do the thing called order at six. Roll call. We do have Mr. Man is here. Yeah, welcome Mark. We did the pledge. And we now are on our student council, Emma and Rome. Are you here? Yes, behind the big guy. You're on.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, the student council decorated the lobby pink in order to spread some Valentine's Day cheer around the school. And we have a few upcoming events at Columbia. We have the blood drive in early March, and we have the senior poetry contest, and the winner of that will be able to read at graduation.
Lastly, we received news about our annual holiday bell ringing in support of Christopher Bascom, a Columbia alum who sadly passed away in 2003. Columbia students raised $2,037 from bell ringing in front of Walmart one day in December. We are very proud and happy to take this news with us into the second half of the school year. Thank you.
Any plans for the break? Thanks for being here this evening. So now moving on to the draft minutes for February first. I was not present and Mr. Dunn was not present. Any questions, comments, revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, any motion to approve those? Joy and second, Jennifer, those in favor, others abstaining, approved. Now moving to the board forum. I'll start at my left with Cheryl.
Just I know the high school had the snowball again, which was actually in the winter. I know we had it last year, and it was actually, I think, in April, but it seemed like it was, you know, well-run. I know a lot of the cheerleading parents helped, so we appreciate that. And I think the kids had a great time, so glad to see it back.
And I am good as well. We'll now move to the public forum session of our meeting. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If their response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the tier of the meeting and should state from record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's form is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum through orderly efficient operation of board business. Addition and remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be cleared out of order. All comments shouted them to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this time? Is your chance, students? All right. We will now move on to the reports and presentations of the superintendent schools.
Yes, just a brief update on our capital project planning. The architect for the district, March Associates, has begun the process to submit the data to the state education department regarding our building condition survey, which will be due in March. The five-year plan that you saw presented back in December is still under review. We're continuing to have conversations about information needed to be able to bring back to the board further information regarding a potential bond vote for the next capital project. The budget review and advisory committee BRAC meeting was delayed a little bit this month. We're going to have it after the break. And we plan to share some of that information that was presented at the December board meeting with our BRAC committee and get some feedback from that group. Additionally, we're still in the process of working with Janay and Red Mill on playground designs. Some of the costs associated with those playgrounds are of concern to me, so we're going to continue to look at that process. We had thought that we would go out to vendor through state contract, but we wanted to look at other vendors and potentially go out with an RFP. There are also some vendors that have come forward recently in the area that do playground work, and we want to give them a fair opportunity to, you know, proposals for those designs. So before that information is completed, the board will see that. But I do want to just acknowledge that back at the meeting at DPS, I believed at the time that the budget that was available with the current project would be able to do both of those playgrounds. But based on the design process right now, our design exceeds those costs, and so we want to get other proposals. We're beyond the budget. We had approximately $700,000 at the time that we had allocated for the playgrounds, and one of those playgrounds exceeds that $700,000. With the underlying site work that needs to be done, so it's not within the budget that we have, so we're going to make the process a little bit more competitive.
So we're actually looking at now the summer now?
It's possible that we would not be able to complete the work this summer. We're still investigating.
Any questions for Mark? Got to do it right and make sure that the costs are in line with what we're going to do.
As everybody knows, costs are going up on everything, but we also think that, you know, looking at other designs and other contractors that specialize in playground equipment and playground installation, it's just a good business practice, checking where we are at with costs right now. That concludes my report.
So next to attendance and attending?
Yes, I want to invite Mr. McHugh to come forward and talk with our board about data that we've been tracking regarding student attendance. The board supports active attendance committee policy. And then attendance committee has been meeting more times this year than we have in the past. Because as you know, school districts coming off of a situation with the pandemic had increases in the number of instances and where students are absent from school, and we've reported concerns about chronic absenteeism and making sure that our interventions are in place to improve in attendance and also to improve in the number of students that are tardy. So for a few years now, we've been reporting this data. We have the first semester completed now. Mr. McHugh is going to present the middle school data as well as some of the work that's going on at the school to address attendance. And Mr. Harker will do the same.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, so we're just a little under 1,000 students at Goff Middle School, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We have 114 students at Goff Middle School that are by definition chronically absent. That's 10% or more of the school days that have been held in session. We've done a lot. This is really live data, so at the time that this memo was updated on in at the end of January, we had 111 attendance letters that were signed and mailed home. That number is probably closer to 150 at this point. But we send the letters home. We send a letter home from the principal. We attach the actual attendance record, so families can see the actual days that students were either legally excused or unexcused, and we also attached the district attendance policy with that letter. This morning, one additional visit by our SRO. So we have Jay Gravel, our school resource officer, Rensley County Sheriff, that's actually made 21 visits. It was 20 this morning. By the end of the day, it was 21 home visits, so that has been really successful. Our guidance counselors and our assistant principals are also making home visits. They've done well over a dozen home visits. We all make phone calls. Our teachers, you know, it is about relationships, trying to encourage teachers and our support staff to establish that solid relationship with our students. So we poll our chronic absenteeism data every week. We share it out so people know the students that are by definition chronically absent, and we talk about making those strong connections with kids, making those phone calls, saying, hey, we missed you today. Where are you? You know, had something special planned, but trying to make those connections. We have used CPS and probation. We use Parent Square to push out communication as well and encourage our students and our families to, you know, try to improve their attendance. We encourage kids to take the bus. That is really leading to our tardiness. We have too many kids that are getting driven into school every day. That kind of really impacts the traffic drop-off, so really trying to get parents to let the kids take the school transportation. One additional thing is that we have had that new family intervention specialist. That position started January 20th, and that's been effective as well. On her first day at Goff, she met with our guidance counselors and our social workers and our administrative team to really identify some families that fit under that title of family intervention specialists, trying to plug them into county resources. So any things that were obstacles for kids to come to school, she was kind of the go-between facilitator, so she's at work. On the second page, you just saw that our numbers were down, so compared to February 1st of 2022, compared to February 1st of 2023, our numbers are down. So unexcused absences are down by 778, and our tardies are down by 219. It's not as much as we would hope, but it is improvement. And any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McHugh.
So at the high school, we have seen the same thing. We've seen a drastic decrease in the number of absences. And that is due to our social worker and our attendance committee identifying students right away from the first week of school who are not attending. And like Mr. McHugh stated, we went out, we did home visits, we used a parent notification. And that's really why we see that in 2,000 absences, there's a huge difference. And that's not even counting the excuse ones from last year for COVID. It'd be 6,000, we'd be down at 6,000, but really just having the extra social worker in the building, Officer Ashley, and making the visits has really made an impact on our attendance for absences. Our tardies continue to be an issue. And the students here sitting here will tell you that when we have bad weather, like today was windy, we probably had twice as many parent drop-offs as we would on a normal day, and they'll tell you that backs up in the circle, and then it forces our student drivers to rush to get here. The group of students who's here today are never late. They always plan to get to the building around 7:10. And they do a great job at that. So we're trying to change that mindset. We're working on a letter right now from our attendance committee to send home to parents to, again, encourage them to take the bus. You're never late to take the bus. I know it's early, but it's just the easiest and safest way to get to school. And also, if you are going to drive, please, please be there by 7:10. If you drop your telephone at 7:10, it gives them 10 minutes to get into the building, get themselves acclimated for the day, and make their way to period one. We've been really, like I said, we really had seen a real decrease since the second semester started, the first three weeks. And then today was our first weather day where it's windy, and then we had 40 parent drop-offs. We had 40 kids late today just on parent drop-offs alone. So it's very frustrating. And again, they have the Starbucks in their hands. It's, you know, it drives us all crazy at the front door, but we do still assign detentions after every five. We have kids doing community service to make that up. Our senior drivers that are late do a lot of community service, so a lot of them at Winter Fest, working off their hours, they can use a parking spot, so we have every sort of practices for everybody, and we will continue to plug away on the tardies. Any questions?
I can give you Jim too. There's been a lot of those resurgence sometimes with some COVID things and other illnesses this year. Has that impacted the last couple months?
It really hasn't, because with COVID now, they identify your sensitive start date and the five days after it, so we really have not seen anyone with the full five days. I did the 141st kid that's had, student that's had COVID this year. At this time last year, we were at 635. So, you know, I've had COVID three times, twice during the 10-day quarantine, once during the five-day, and just missing work myself. You know, I got it on a Friday, so I only missed Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, too. I was back in the office on Wednesday. So the same thing happens with the students, and the teachers are great. They get an email that says, you know, student will be out until they can return on the 15th, and they connect with them. They send them the work. They say, if they have any questions, let me know. We'll set up a meet. So we're not even seeing, like, we can't even use that as an excuse for why your grades are falling back, because you're out for such a short period of time. It's really helped a lot. And that is in there for this year. Those are unexcused absences. No, I'm sorry, they're not. I apologize. That's a different category.
So if we had a Starbucks in the building, maybe that would help.
This is a noble.
Yeah, in the team effort, I think, I think the family engagement intervention specialist has really kind of done a bit more than we hoped that it would, and I think that additional support that we provided in the
Third social worker at the high school has really made a difference. Two could stay in the building, one can go out with Officer Ashley to make visits.
That's important. Hopefully, can encourage those students to get back in.
Yeah.
Back in the swing of things.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Stiles.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Stiles. So tonight, I do have Mr. Jones, Mr. Hosley, and Mr. Labardi, who are going to give you a brief presentation on a new course proposal that the phys ed department brought to our committee on curriculum studies on December 14th. The name of the course is Fit for Life Foundations. I think we're all very excited of this possibility, so I will turn it over to the three of them.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Ryan Jones. For those that don't know, our new athletic director, Director of Health and Physical Education. We're here to present Fit for Life Foundations. I do have Tom Labardi here, our wellness coordinator, and Chris Hosley, our department chair for phys ed, here to talk about this new course proposal that we came up with. These guys are the masterminds behind it. They came to me with a vision. We met about it, talked about it, and then we took off from there, brought it to CCS. So these guys are going to really talk about what the course is, the outline of it, and where we want to go forward with this as.
Yes. All right. Thank you again for having me tonight. So Mr. Hosley and I were talking about things we can do to increase our personal performance in some of our, you know, physical education activities, and just want to give you guys a couple stats. I'm not going to bore you and go through everything, but our child obesity is, you know, a serious health problem, obviously, in this country, and, you know, one in five of our adolescents are obese, okay? By 2030, the CDC is projecting that we could have 50% morbidly obese. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us to get our kids moving that aren't in athletics, that don't, you know, have a hard time with regular PE and don't want to participate in personal performance. So this would be an opportunity to get them in and introduce them to some cardiovascular equipment and get them moving that are normally in a sedentary lifestyle. You know, we're sitting all day, and then they only get about roughly 60 minutes of physical education each week. So the goal is to, obviously, to try to increase that, you know. Since COVID has hit, we've actually started to go back down even further. So, you know, this is an opportunity for us to try to get our kids, you know, up and moving and introduce them to equipment that is not intimidated. It's going to be, you know, something that they can get used to and get comfortable with.
All right, so what is this course about? It's a nine through 12-based phys ed class. It's basically cardio-based with basic wellness knowledge, and what we're looking at is having rowers, having stationary bikes, stationary skiers, treadmills for walking and running, and then obviously, if it's nice, I wouldn't go outside, do some, you know, walking and running. And Mr. Labardi here has done the walking club for the staff, and it's also something that we could do with our students and just getting them outside when it is nice out. So another thing with this class, it's going to introduce a little bit of basic wellness knowledge, too, so not crazy heavy resistance training, but lighter resistance training. Because we do have two other courses. We have our games class, our balls and our nets, like our ballgames and net games class. And we also have our PE 100 classes, more intense fitness training. So this is more so just to get kids and diversify our experiences in phys ed, so they have now an option of the three different classes, because we know all students don't learn the same way in the classroom. Kids also don't exercise the same way, so we're, you know, have some students who might be intimidated by the weight room, or not like, you know, ballgames or net games. So this is more, like I said, a cardio-based class where these kids can get in and have a low, not lower intensity, but less, you know, intimidating atmosphere in the class. So like I said, we're really trying to diversify those experiences for the students, so they have options, and then they, you know, kind of can get in and get a little more activity in during the school day. So going into our goals, Tom will speak on that a little bit.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, we want our kids that are nine through 12 to be more active, but, you know, the core of this class is to have them be fit for life. We want to get them moving now, so when they get to college or they go to trade school, whatever they may do as they leave here, they are prepared, so they can walk into a planet fitness, they can walk into any, you know, gym in the area and understand the equipment, understand how to burn, you know, calories, understand that their heart rate needs to be at a certain level to burn a certain amount of calories. And just kind of give them a basis and an understanding, so when they leave here, they feel comfortable, you know, taking control of their own health. And that's the main core of this class. We really want to teach kids how to be fit for life. You know, it's right in the name, and we're really trying to institute, you know, how kids can, that, like I said, like Mr. Hosley kind of touched on, we don't know, this isn't going to be targeted for our athletes. You know, we want the kids and the students that don't feel comfortable in the weight room, that don't feel comfortable in the games classes. We want those students in here so we can kind of teach them how to take care of themselves. You know, because we, like I said before, we are headed in a direction, you know, that it's going to be hard to come back from, so we need to really start making this a priority, especially at the high school level.
All right, so as far as the course needs, I know we talked to Mr. Stiles and Mr. Jones about this. We're looking for rowers, we're looking for skier G's, which are more stationary skiers, is all concept to equipment, treadmills, and then stationary bikes. Where this would be would be the multipurpose room, which is exactly next to where the fitness center is, and you can see where the pictures are. Fitness center is on the left, on the top up there, which when you walk into the schools on the left, the multipurpose room is right on the other side. So the fitness center, like I said, they're back to back. They're kind of almost identical in size, so there's a lot of room to be able to have that equipment in there and space to do other light resistance training with these students that are in the class. Then we're also trying to consider having a door or some sort of overhead door between the two, so we can kind of connect the two rooms one. So if there isn't a class in one or the other, we can use the other side. We can transfer equipment from one side to the other. This makes life a little bit easier when we're teaching whether it be the one class or two class in that. During, and I understand that there are, we know that there are sports and teams that use that multipurpose room in the winter, but we will now structure our other classes around that. So the two and a half, three months that wrestling would be in the multipurpose room, we would structure. We have bowling that's off-campus. We have the opportunity to use the gym when other classes are bowling, or use the fitness center when those classes are bowling as well. So there's opportunities, and there's different things that we can do and be creative to get kids, you know, active when they aren't, for those two months, being used in that multipurpose room.
Yeah, so just to touch upon the equipment that we'd be using, we would be looking into the Assault Pro Runner, and the cool thing about this treadmill is it's self-propelled, okay? So you can't, you know, it's not one of those treadmills where you put it on one, and that's, you know, we actually want to teach proper gait, teach our students how to walk properly, and you propel it yourself. So obviously, as it, you know, if you're jogging, it'll jog at the rate you're jogging. If you're walking at the pace, it'll be the same pace that you're walking. The concept to equipment is great because it's calorie-based. We'd be able to go off the amount of calories each student is burning. So say we, the cal, you know, it'd be a Thursday morning class. The class would come in, our goal target would be 25 calories on each piece of equipment. You know, that would be the example we're trying to use, and we would have certain goals and set up, so each student has something to strive for. All this equipment is great because it does touch a lot of the total body. Chris kind of spoke about the skier. This is kind of a new piece of equipment that a lot of, you know, a lot of schools are kind of trying to introduce. It is a total body. It's to your far right, and it's, you know, it's one of these machines where you actually hold down, so it's upper body as well as your lower body. So this is the kind of the stuff we're aiming to get and teach our students how to use properly.
So we all know that the landscape of fitness has changed. You've seen orange theories to planet fitnesses, to the ABC sports, to the anatomies. So the concept, the whole idea of fitness has changed, and there's different opportunities for different types of people, and these places are obviously doing very well. But also, it's aimed towards our adult population, so we want to have something, not necessarily exactly like that, but to have opportunities and diversified experiences for these kids and for our kids in school, so that they can kind of find their corner in fitness and that they can, you know, get into a class and feel comfortable, get into the weight room, feel comfortable, get on a piece of cardio equipment, feel comfortable, and get moving. So, other than that, Mr. Jones, do you have anything else? Anybody have any questions?
So this is going to be another offering for PE credit?
Yep, so we'd have three offerings. We have our games class, which is our PE 912, so our, you know, basketball, volleyball, all the badminton, pickleball, stuff like that. Our PE 100 is in the weight room, which is a resistance-based, you know, class that Tom and I redid the curriculum before, so we're, obviously, when Mr. Lider was here, we did the weight room that is more, you know, geared towards lifting, moving weights, moving your body, a little bit more programming involved. And then this one would be the cardio-based class, so they'd have three options for our high school seats.
Besides the equipment pieces, would there be any additional staffing needs for the scheduling?
No additional staffing needs. And one thing that I know Mr. Labardi was touching on with the equipment, this stuff, and, you know, fitness equipment isn't cheap, but this stuff lasts, so we've obviously had, you know, we have some bikes, we have some things, but they break constantly, so the concept of your stuff, the assault stuff, the assault doesn't have a motor, so you have to replace it, but these stuff, these equipment, we've he's done extensive research to make sure that this stuff is the top-of-the-line stuff, and that won't need, you know, to be replaced on a, you know, monthly or yearly, bi-yearly basis.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a resolution later on in the agenda that asks the board to approve this course and just to kind of reinforce, it doesn't require any additional staffing. This is why I believe that we have money in the budget to get some of the equipment or is planning for money.
With much money from the budget this year or from the budget next year?
Next year.
Okay, nothing this year?
You know what? I don't say no to that. We have to review our budget as we get closer to the end of the year.
Okay, all right. That'd be good to find a little something.
So we now have several items for discussion. We will start with the executive budget and the state aid. Is there a proposal in the city?
So the governor released her budget, I believe, on February 7th, just last week. Mrs. Wager and I have reviewed the governor's proposal for state aid. It is a much more positive proposal than what we have ever received in East Green Bush, including our bringing us whole in terms of the amount of money that we're entitled under the foundation for them to receive next year. As Mrs. Wager is going to review the analysis of the aid, I just want, for the public standpoint, just do a little bit of an explanation. The amount of money that we're going to be getting, if the governor's budget either goes through as-is, or if the legislature modifies it, typically, they would increase it, is making up for reductions of the past. It's not a windfall. It's not a large amount of money that shouldn't be spent prudently because we're going to be at a new normal, and then we don't know what the foundation aid formula will be for subsequent years. So we're going to be presenting some more information at the next meeting. We're not even told yet. This is very good news, but we also have to be prudent about recognizing that we're not going to get a 21% increase in foundation aid every year. This is catching us up to where we should have been all along.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So we received our first state aid run, which I don't expect these numbers. They will change slightly. And the governor's budget is expected to pass on April 1st. But foundation aid, which is our largest source of state aid for operating expenses, is proposed to increase from $20.1 million this year to $24.3 million next year. That is an increase of $4.2 million, representing a 21% increase in our foundation aid. This, we expected, as Mr. Simon said, we expected an increase this year in order to make us whole from the gap elimination that took place years ago. We expected about $2 million, and we will be receiving $4.2 million. The reason for the balance of that increase is that the governor's executive budget is calculated using the inflation rate of 7.9%. So that really, that really had an effect on what is called our TAFPU, which is our total aidable foundation pupil units. That is a measurement. That is a measurement of not just our enrollment, but it is weighted by different student classification. So that's the reason really that we're expecting this $4.2 million next year additional. Included as part of the governor's budget in the foundation aid is a set-aside amount for high-impact tutoring. This amount in our state aid run amounts to $426,827. It represents just slightly over 10% of what our increase is. These funds would be required to be used to deliver small group tutoring sessions in reading and math to students in grades three through eight who is designated as risk of falling below state standards. The proposal indicates that these services have to be provided, they may be provided during the school day, before or after school, or on the weekends, but must occur no less than twice a week for no less than 30 minutes per session. These funds are used only to supplement our budget, supplement our programs, not to supplant our programs. One thing I want to say about foundation One thing I want to say about foundation aid before we move on is there is a whole harmless provision in the legislation right now, which means that we would expect going forward, as Mr. Simon said, we don't know what the increases will be starting in 24, 25. However, we, with the whole harmless provision, we expect that it will be no less than the current $24.3 million that is projected for next year. The caveat to that is that, um, we never say never. And that would be, there was another gap elimination in the state budget that, um, could have a, have an effect on it. The next category of aid I wanted to talk about is the universal pre-K. The universal pre-K, we are expecting, we've been allocated about $815,000 more next year than we have in this current year. So our current allocation for next year is $1,398,600. Which is wonderful. Um, the problem, uh, the unfortunate part of that is that the allocation is still remains at $5,400 per student. So in order for us to continue our program as it is, 61 students as we have this year, we expect to only be able to access $329,400 of that, um, of that aid. Now this is one of the, uh, topics that we will be speaking about, uh, tomorrow when we, when we go down to Albany for the lobbying day. Uh, because we really would like to see an increase in the per student allocation. That would be really helpful for us. The next category of aid I wanted to just, uh, bring your attention to is the BOSI's aid. That is shown, that is projected, uh, with a 21.2% increase. Uh, for $2.4 million next year. This is an aid category that I want to take a look at a little bit closer. Uh, the aid projection for this is based on reports that the district files as well as the BOSI's. Um, so I do want to look at that. Um, while I do expect that there will be an increase in BOSI's aid. I want to make sure, um, that we are, um, we do a little bit further analysis on that. And then the last aid category I want to bring your attention to is the transportation aid, which is projected to increase by 14%. That again is another aid category that I want to take a look at. Uh, that may be slightly inflated due to projected expenditures that were reported. So I want to be sure that, um, we, we take a closer look at that. But overall, uh, it is, um, projected to be very positive for our state aid next year. And, um, I will take any questions that you have. No, next year it is, uh, slightly over 10,500 per student.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we still have to make it whole.
Great. And up to now, we have been, um, covering the balance of that with the federal funds that we've been receiving. And, um, as we spoke about at our last meeting, we will look to rely less on the federal bodies going forward because they will start to expire. Um, so we will look to maintain our program next year. We will have the state aid coming in on a portion of it. We will look to fund part of it through our general fund and the balance in the American Rescue Plan one more year.
Oh yeah. We have access to that 815. It would be great if we could access it all.
Yeah. If we could access more per student.
Really need to have more flexibility.
Yeah.
You know, you're increasing the amount of money that's available, but we can't spend it.
Right. That's the frustrating part.
So overall, very positive news in terms of the aid front. Um, I know that when, when the final beat is known, we'll, uh, look at our budget and make sure that we're allocating everything appropriately and it's a good, good issue for the district to have. And I know we've been very conservative fiscally over the several years and I think it's a, it's a good thing to have to discuss. So it's good news. Next item is the tax cap calculation. I think we're staying with Linda on this one.
Yes.
So the tax cap calculation is a multi-step calculation. In order for us to determine the maximum amount, uh, by which our taxes, uh, tax levy can be, um, requiring just a simple majority vote of 50% plus one. So as I said, it's a multi-step, uh, calculation. We start with the current year tax levy, which is 58,374,546. We multiply that by a tax-based growth factor. This is a factor that is provided to us by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance. It accounts for the changes in full value of the taxable property within the district. So for us this year, it is 1.0073. And I will remind you that last year, um, our, our tax-based growth factor was higher at 1.0429. Uh, we also taught me to account the pilot payments, um, that we are expecting to receive in the current year. And then we adjust, uh, we adjust that by our capital levy. Uh, we subtract out our capital levy for this year. Our capital levy is the difference between the building aid expenses for this, for this current year and the income against that. So some of the expenses that are included that I'm talking about is our principal, uh, and interest payments on our long-term and short-term debt, uh, as well as what we are projecting, uh, what we, we projected to spend on buses. That sort of thing. And the income, uh, the income associated with that is some of the building aid that comes in along that. Uh, the next factor in this is we come down to a subtotal. And then we apply an allowable levy growth factor. This is where, when we first started talking about the tax cap, it was always known as the 2% tax cap. Um, this is where that 2% comes in because this is the lower of either the CPI in the preceding school tax year or 2%. So the, the figure that we are balanced, balancing this against is an 8% tag, uh, inflation rate. So we have to multiple, we have to use the 2% for this year. So we increase that by the 2%. We then have to subtract out the pilots that we are expecting in 23, 24. And then we have to also adjust for the capital levy exclusion that we're expecting in 23, 24. That brings us down to the bottom line number of the tax levy limit plus exclusions is $59,90453. That represents a maximum 2.61% that we can increase the tax levy by and still have a simple majority. Uh, as we said, we're, we're going to start talking about the budget at our next meeting on March 8th. But this is one of the factors, just so that we have this information. Now this is preliminary. It is subject to change. I do expect it to change uh, for a couple of reasons. I have been working closely with Rensselaer County IDA on the pilot payments for next year and the pilot payments we're receiving. So I do expect that number to change. Uh, as well as, you know, we're, we're looking at, um, our bus purchases. And so that number may change and that's part of the capital exclusion number. Uh, are there any questions on this? As I said, it's very preliminary. I do expect it to change, but right now it's 2.61%.
Okay. Please trade forward. Well, whoever's seen that before and the page two, I think with the footnotes is important.
Yes.
You see the tax levy cap for 2023 was 4.4. We came in at zero for taxpayers, right?
And in 2122, it was 1.28. It was the 0% tax levy increase that year as well.
That's the goal for this year too, right? Uh, we haven't made that determination. We want to have discussions with the board about that at the next meeting.
So the next meeting in March?
March 8th. And one of the things I want to remind the board of is, um, we have been fortunate over the last couple of years in the amount of federal funding that we've been receiving. That is expiring some of it, about half of it this year, at the end of this year. And the remainder of it by the end of June, June 2024.
And I would like to remind the board members that we have a, quite a state aid increase. And, you know, I think that we should be thinking hard about that March eighth meeting, about where we want to be in terms of a budget in tax, cap levy, tax levy for our taxpayers again this year.
Significant increase. Probably is 24, 25, you know, what, what, what is going to happen in 2024 or 25 is a very unknown and and, um, we haven't really looked at total expense side of the budget yet with what our expenses are going up. So we hope to have more of that information on the expense side of the budget. So the next budget vote's going to be for 23, 24, right? Right. But, um, we're not going to get the revenue from the state in one year that we're getting now. So we are a little cautious about. I'm a little cautious about saying but we didn't know we were going to get this much either. We, I mean, last year we didn't we knew we were going to get a $2 million increase. I mean, that's, that's a big increase from last year. Yes. You know, I just don't want to, and we'll talk about it. You gotta look at the revenue side in the context of what our expenses are going up. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. And inflation has been pretty high, as we all know.
That 21% increase is going to get sucked up pretty good.
Well, the, the increase in foundation aid, don't forget, is reflective of the increase in what it takes to operate and educate our students. Um, it is based on inflation. So it's, it's costing the district more, um, as well to operate.
Okay. Next item, I think we're staying with Linda again, federal funded positions of the innovation specialists.
We are. Thank you.
Make sure you get some water.
So what are the concerns for the board? As I said, we've been very fortunate to receive over $7 million in federal funding over the last couple of years. And one of the concerns for the board was the positions that we have been charging to the federal fund. And how are we going to, what is our plan for relying less on the budget funds? And absorbing some of those, uh, positions into the general fund. So what I've provided for you here, and this was as of February 3rd. Uh, this is a list of the individual positions that we intended to charge to the federal funds. So we started charging those salaries in 21, 22. The list is there. In the current year, 22, 23, we went from charging in 21, 22, a total of 36.4 positions, which were made up of 18.4 teaching positions, 17 TA positions and one monitor. In the current year, 22, 23, we are now charging 23.2 positions to the federal funds. That is made up of 10 teaching positions and 13 TAs. So then next year, we plan to, um, continue to charge 10 positions to the federal funds, the remaining federal funds. That will be made up of two K3 intervention specialists, uh, a wellness coordinator and seven TAs. So then after 23, 24 into 24, 25, we'll need to deal with absorbing those remaining 10 positions into the general fund budget. Uh, but as you can see, what I wanted to demonstrate here for you is that each year of the federal funds, we have relied less and less on those funds to, um, to cover salaries. Um, now I talked about the K3 intervention specialists. I'm saying that next year, um, originally we hired 10 of them. In the current year, we have six of them charged to the, uh, six employees charged to the federal funds. And next year I expect to charge two of them to the, uh, federal funds. And Mr. Styles will now review with you, um, how we're going to, with the remaining intervention specialists, how we're going to pay for those and how we're absorbing those into the general fund for next year.
Um, so if you look on the second page here, I'm actually going to start with the, um, bottom, bottom table. So for this current school year, we have 30.1 total reading teachers and K3 interventionists. So, uh, you can see there's 24.1 total reading teachers and six, um, intervention specialists. And you can see how they're broken down, um, and assigned to each of the schools. So when you look at, at our number of students that are receiving reading intervention, you can see at Bell Top, there are 39, DPS has 57, Janay 106, Green Meadow 122, and Red Mill 105. Uh, and golf is 137. So on the last column there, what I wanted to show you is, is the percent of our students that are receiving intervention. So out of those numbers that based on our Renaissance Star assessment are showing typical and high growth. So there are most at-risk struggling readers. And as you can see, um, we have about almost 70% of those students are showing from their fall assessment to their winter assessment. Um, what we would call typical, um, and high growth. Um, so I think that that's, you know, a great reason to continue, uh, utilizing these, you know, our reading teachers and K3 interventionists. If you go up to, um, the top table, what we're proposing for next school year is to go from 30.1 to 27.1. We would still, um, have 24.1 reading teachers. And as Linda said, we would go down to three K3 interventionists. Um, again, these are tentative, um, assignments based on, you know, our current data. You know, what we would think about recommending. I do want to note um, that, you know, we're currently looking at, uh, Columbia because they currently have three reading teachers. And possibly going down to one, reassigning some of those reading teachers to support at our elementary level. Um, but I'm going to be working with Mr. Harkin, um, and continuing to see, you know, how we're going to still provide reading intervention to our high school students. Um, and, you know, as Linda says, so three of the interventionists, right now we currently have six, started with 10, six this year going to three. Um, so where do those three interventionists go? Um, three of those interventionists um, will move into vacated positions. We are going to propose that, uh, one moves to the general fund and two, um, you know, stays in the federal funds.
So we've had retirements that lined up with those three positions and those people would move into those positions that are already in the budget. So we'd go from the six to the three that way. And based on our data, we feel the three would continue to support the intervention program. Two would could be in the, our funds that Linda presented at the last meeting and the one you'll see in our general fund budget proposal at the next meeting. So we've really done what we wanted to do is improve, uh, the students' reading and math uh, and early literacy skills, but these students are still making growth, not quite on level yet. They've made average to better growth. And we are reducing our reliance on the federal funds. And we are not shifting all of those staff members into the general fund, which I know was a rightful concern of the board at the time we discussed the federal grant. So we're, we're pleased at the student progress, but we're also pleased that things have worked out in such a way that we can you know, carefully recommend the plan that Mr. Styles and Mrs. Wager and Mr. Cannon have put together. So in the, the chart that you spoke of Linda, so we've reduced from 21, 22 to 22, 23 roughly 16 positions. Was that through retirements and attrition? Those 16 positions and then 23, 24, we're going from 23 down to 10, roughly 13 positions. Again, those retirements and attrition were.
Yeah, pretty much. We are moving position, we are moving some of these positions out of the federal funds uh, into the general fund. You may recall that, uh, when we started first using these funds, we had positions already budgeted for in the general fund. Um, specifically some TA salaries. And, um, we never took those out of the budget because our intent was to, um, create a, a surplus of fund balance so that we could use these funds farther into the future. So, um, we've got six TA salaries that remained in the budget. Going back to the 21, 22 school year, we've carried those forward and we will continue to carry those forward. Um, and now we are bringing six of those TA salaries back into the general fund where they were originally budgeted for. Uh, others are due to retirements, attrition. Uh, others are due to retirements, attrition, that sort of thing. As far as the K three intervention specialists, Rosa, did you want to um, cover how we're, we're absorbing those three?
Yes.
And funding the other three?
So we have two retirements this year, known retirements and uh, the tenure area of elementary education. And then one retirement in reading. Um, so the plan is to um. Move the one certified reading teacher into the uh, vacant reading position come next year. And then um, two will go into the uh, elementary retirements, which leaves a total of three K to three. Intervention specialists, and as Mr. Simon says, um, one would go into the general fund. And then two positions would be covered under the ARP learning loss grant within the federal funds. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The um. What was that supplemental fund, the tutoring aid set aside? If we kept the existing structure, we were supplementing. Usually, could you use that fund for an interventionist? It's tutoring, it's supplemental work. Is that fit in the category of?
Well.
Academic intervention and tutoring, is that kind of?
Right, that, the only information we have on that high impact tutoring is exactly what I said. It needs to be used to provide tutoring for grades three through eight students that are designated as falling, falling. Below standard. Uh, it has to be a certain number of sessions. Uh, so, so certainly we can. We can use some of that money if that passes in the budget. That right now is in the um, executive, as an executive proposal that may or may not. Uh, become reality when we get to April.
One of our advocacy positions is we would like to be able to use that money as we need to, as these federal funds are retiring the four hundred and.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand dollars far exceeds the amount of money that we actually would ever be able to spend in tutoring. But it would, it would make uh, a, a sense to be able to.
Okay.
Sustain the intervention program that we have in place by using that money, which would maybe wouldn't have to. You know, so we're going to uh, in this case, as opposed to this set aside. Uh, because we don't like set asides. Uh, we. Foundation aid is based on formulas.
Yep.
And basic needs and to have our foundation aid formula. The rule saying you have to set it aside, it can only be grades three through eight, our intervention program is generally K three. There's some problems and some flaws with the way it's, et cetera.
My other question, going through um, Roy's table. So when I look at the number of students receiving intervention, the table, about twenty-five percent of the students in DPS, Janay. Again, this is roughly, I look at. In the head calculations. There are four. You know, DPS, Janay, Green Meadow, Red Mill made tremendous progress. I don't want to shortchange DPS because you have. Kindergarten students coming in, and then those pre-K there, that. Is it too early to pull from that intervention specialist? Should there be another one there for another year? I just don't want to see any slippage, and it means, again, they made some tremendous progress on the seventy-five percent. So I don't know, Jack can speak to that or something that Roy you can speak to. I just don't want to shortchange one of the schools that has had a lot of intervention. Right, so services for students.
Yeah, so right now DPS, for example, has three point one um, interventionist, you know, reading teachers. They would continue to have the three point one, so they would, they would stay the same. Um. You know, Janay currently has five total in terms of the reading. Um, yep, so Janay would also stay the same. Um, Green Meadow currently has six total interventionists. When you include the three reading teachers and three.
So you're combining.
Interventions, right.
Okay.
So yes, there, when I look at these, um. You, you do have two different categories in terms of reading teachers and interventions, but. They do a lot of very, very similar work and they're able to really um. You know, touch a lot of the same, a lot of similar students.
Okay. That's important. I think you made some re-progress there. With reading, it's, we know that K three reading component is so critical. You have questions? Moving on, discussion item. D, school budget locations, quick summary there.
Just briefly, um, there's been concern over the last few years regarding safety of students. When we have to use schools as uh, voting places. And our district um. Uh, typically holds the school vote at designated um, schools, DPS, Green Meadow. Golf and Belltop, uh, based on the towns. Um, we want to make some adjustments to uh, where we put those polling places within the schools. But also we want to make a change to move the voting place that typically is at golf to this building. Which is more secure and provides really no access to students. Um, at DPS, uh, change can be made to where the voting actually occurs at DPS, uh, right? As you go inside of an outside entrance near the library. Correct?
It's currently held in front of the library. We want to move it over, or I'm sorry, in front of the gym. We want to move it into the library. So there is a separate entrance there.
The Green Meadow location is pretty fun, it's pretty good right now. Uh, the Belltop location, a little bit of an adjustment, but the major change would be if the board supported that moving the uh, the East Green Bush primary. Voting place to this building. My only concern with that is parking. Because you're going to have your regular staff park in here for that day. And golf is our biggest voting center. And I don't want to deter voters from coming in, not being able to find a place to park, and then out they go.
Right.
And this is a horrible driveway to get out of here. Um, with the Route four traffic.
Right.
So whereas the middle school, you have the light. Um, I would much rather see us implement some more type security measures at golf and keep it there because of the size. The parking in the ease of access than. You know, relying on the few spots out here in front, you know, and then now you're talking, people are going to start looking all over the building. And I just don't want to deter voters because they don't have the ease that they have at golf.
We don't have a good solution for the traffic in front of uh, the building, and you're right about the, you know. The congestion out here and it's hard to get out and in here. We were going to ask the staff for that day, including ourselves, to park in the back and leave the front parking lot, the side parking lot open.
Do we know how many parking spots are up here? Because there's times where I go to golf where it's packed. And you know, I don't want to go from having, right, you know, a hundred spots over there to thirty out here.
Right.
So what are the typical hours, seven to seven, seven AM to nine PM?
Yeah, if anybody wanted to park here, we moved it here during, you know, the end of the day parent pickup, that would be. Very challenging.
I don't want to impact the turnout either. And that was one of my reservations about not doing this last year. But we have, we, we have received some communications from citizens regarding what, what uh. You know, some of the vulnerabilities at golf. That's what we, we wanted to take a look at and talk about it.
And, and that's why I'd say, you know, maybe if we look at the implementation of additional security measures on that day. Um, for the dip always, um, again, I, I just. Don't want to deter voters from going to a very ease of parking. And ease of getting out and to now having to come here, fight for parking and, and fight to get on a route or. I mean, we need the cops out here at three o'clock to get the buses out because traffic is horrendous. Um, you'd still, we'd still have the bus traffic at three o'clock as well, correct?
Yes. And the parent, parent entry at quarter to, quarter to nine is difficult here. If I'm out of the meeting somewhere, I can't get in here.
That's one of my concerns with, with, you know, I agree with everything else, you, you have your mind to service this.
Well, we can go back to golf and look to see if we can find an alternate um, place for the voting. I mean, right now it takes place inside in the gym. And the thing that I noticed when I walked up there last year is the doors are open. Uh, students are crossing at the same time as residents are entering, and that's a real safety concern. Uh, so. We can go back to golf, take a look to see if there is uh. Another location within golf that maybe, like, we found a place at Belltop where we can really go around the back of the building. There is parking there. Um, the staff that day will be requested to park in the lower parking lot that they have, leaving that parking lot open for residents coming in to vote. Um, there's handicap uh, access, and then this way we can lock that door off from. The library, basically is the only entrance into the building. So we can look at golf or a possible. Location like that. And we'll report back to you.
Just any concern, Johnny, a question?
I apologize if it's already been addressed because I, I wasn't at any meetings where this was discussed. Has there been um, any safety breaches or specific incidents in regards to this? So this is not driven by a specific incident.
No, there's been a lot of statewide discussions of this among schools, and we received a letter from a citizen recently about it.
So the next. Um, just in thinking outside the box, the cafeteria does not have. Can be shut down and you can access it without going into the main part of the school where we have our board meetings. Now, I know the, obviously, the, the impact of that is something, but wouldn't that be? Shift the cafeteria where they eat to the gym? Wouldn't it be easier to shift the students to an alternate? Part for that day?
Possibility because we don't use the gym that day anyways.
That's what, that, that's my point, and that way there's direct access, and I do agree with Mark, I, I. As, I would prefer to, to line the corridor with security. Ensuring the safe ingress and egress rather than put it here because you can't deal with Route four. I, it will definitely impact our budget turnout. I, I agree with Mark's assessment on that. So that was just something. That came to me that we, we wouldn't have to do, it would be an inconvenience. For the building that they would, election day already is an inconvenience, whether what building it's in.
As you were saying that, I see Mr. McKeon nodding his head, it's feasible. I miss you, buddy.
So we're, we're in favor of exploring that solution?
Yeah.
Thank you for the input, appreciate it. So the next item is, I mean, we have some enrollment projections for kindergarten. Just taking this.
I would like to start, just, okay. Um, we do this every year. We start the budget process by looking at enrollment. And one of the issues that we look at is based on what we know now, how many kids are in the school and how many students are registered for kindergarten. What are we thinking about in terms of the range of classroom teachers that would be needed at these schools to be within our class size guidelines? Um, it's a very fluid process. Students leave the district during the year, it's only February. And the new students come in, and depending on what attendance only move into, it has an impact on what grade level, it has an impact on what. These numbers are going to look like. They're going to look very different in some schools. Um, between now and the time the budget passes, and they may look even a little bit different. From the time uh, the budget passes until September of twenty twenty-three. Um, so this is part of our process. It's, it, we're not saying tonight that this is going to be the number of classrooms per grade level. For September. But in all cases, these numbers are within our guidelines. One thing I would point out, and then Linda can go through the specifics, when you have. A number such as forty-nine kids per class, or in, in a particular grade level. Uh, which we do in grade two at Belltop. Your choices, you have two sections, one of twenty-five and twenty-four, which are both within the guidelines, or. Or have sixteen, sixteen, if I'm doing my math correct, and seventeen. And to make a decision now to go from two sections to three sections. Put you in a position where you might have very low class sizes at Belltop or at another school. And enrollment may increase at a different school in the district and you have an equity problem. You might have twenty-five in one area, one school, the district, and fifteen in another. We've also seen situations where you'd make the decision early, kids move out of the district and you're at fifteen. And fourteen, and all that has to be weighed against uh, our budget, which we really haven't even um. Formulated yet. So. I know that there are concerns within the community about certain class sizes and certain buildings. Um, this is not. Set in stone and subject to change.
Thank you. Uh, so just so you know how I came up with this report. Is I took our current enrollment as of February ninth directly um, from Power School. Was provided to me by the data processing department. I took that current enrollment and I rolled. Those grades forward a year. Uh, and then I looked at kindergarten. I kept kindergarten the same as it currently is because. We're just starting our kindergarten registration, so we really are very unsure as to where we are with. Uh, kindergarten registration, but highlighted in blue under kindergarten column. Um, are the number of packets, registration packets that have been sent out as of February ninth. Everything is as of February ninth. So in looking at this, um, if I could start with Belltop. Um, one of the first things I, I looked at is, okay, we'll roll kindergarten forward, those forty-six students to grade one. So either our options are to have three sections at fifteen, fifteen and sixteen, which. May be considered fairly low for grade one, or we could have two sections which are twenty-three and twenty-three. The one thing I would highlight here is my concern at Belltop is grades one, two and three. As it stands right now, and the reason is because. We have what we have determined as a flex zone, which are the Eagle Rock Apartments. And uh, we look at those registrations, we look at those entrances very carefully. Because that is right on the edge between Belltop and Red Mill. So. We've had to this year and at the end of last year, look at those uh, those entrances, enrollments on a one-to-one basis. And determine where is the best placement. Um, under DPS. Similar, similar idea, uh, rolling the grade levels forward as the actual enrollment. Keeping kindergarten, um, assuming that kindergarten stays the same at forty-three. Uh, however, as of two-nine, we've already sent out forty-six registration packets for kindergarten, so it might be slightly larger. Uh, the thing I want to say about DPS is that we always need to keep in mind that that is one of our, that is a Title I school. And so we do look to keep the, the class sizes a little bit smaller on the smaller size there. Uh, Janay, I'm, I'm seeing um, as a. As a possible issue for next year. Um, in a couple of um. Starting with kindergarten, we currently have eighty kindergarteners, four sections of twenty each, moving to first grade. We currently have distributed eighty-five, eighty-six. Registration packets for next year. So we're expecting a large kindergarten, incoming kindergarten class at Janay. So that is one item that we need to keep an eye on, as well as we have a smaller class leaving fifth grade. Then uh, coming in. So we are seeing a need to possibly add an additional section at the fourth grade level. But again, these are all things we're going to keep an eye on as we um, make our way through the budget process and. And enrollment is constantly changing. Uh, Green Meadow, pretty much, uh, we expect that to stay where it is this year. Uh, the, the kindergarten is at fifty-four right now, moving into first grade, and we've currently sent out fifty-three packets. Now, Red Mill is a little bit different. Red Mill has eighty-nine students in kindergarten this year. It was necessary for us to have. A fifth section of kindergarten at Red Mill. If we move that forward to grade one, just the way it is. Um, those, those class sizes are seventeen and eighteen. We could. Have four sections of grade one next year at Red Mill. Uh, that would be about twenty-two to twenty-three students per section. That would um, just free up for some moving and shifting. Uh, we are also. looking at kindergarten registration at Red Mill. It will not need five sections of kindergarten next year. As of two nine, we've sent out sixty-five registration packets. So as I said, registration is just starting this month. For kindergarten, we'll we'll have to see how that goes and we need to continue to look at our current sections, look at our current staffing and the goal here is to have the staffing for adequate sized class sections. Are there any questions on that? Thank you.
Any comments? So yeah, I'm going to address the issue. We got some community involvement with Belltop. And I just want to assure the families there and I don't know if there's space to be more sections or whatever it is, but you know, this is very preliminary, looking at incoming packets for kindergarten, looking at the number of just basically doing a rollover and seeing what would be best. And then we'll look at the data at this as it evolves and we'll communicate with our parents and families and make sure that we address their concerns, knowing that these numbers may shift. And you know, those are high, high numbers in terms of the great one, two and three rollovers in terms of the number of sections. And again, like it has to be balanced out as Mr. Simon says earlier with what the needs are, what the space capacities are. What are some of the other issues that we're facing and making sure that we're meeting the needs of the students and staff? So I think that, you know, if if people follow this process and the Belltop community has concerns, speak to their principal Marty Amhar and you know, we'll we'll address what we can address and continue to see where we can work through the flex zones and other things that will help balance that load at at Belltop. It's a small school, has limited number of classrooms and it's challenging, but it's a growing community too. It really is. So you know, we we faced this issue a few years back. So we'll we'll work together to make things appropriate for our students. We've done split classes before. We've done things like that. So we'll come up with some solutions to address those those learning needs for for our elementary students at Belltop as well. So I hope that is enough information I can share at this point. And like you said, it'll evolve over the next couple of months as as things shift and we get more concrete information. Thank you, Mr. Bureau. So a lot of discussion items. I appreciate the board's patience. The next item is we're going to talk about a recent legislation that allowed for municipalities and school districts to look at a potential property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters. And I think Linda's going to take us through a little presentation. This is newer to a lot of us and we've heard about it. We don't know a lot of details and Linda's going to take us through some eligibility things and and what that means. I will say just a quick comment before Linda starts. We appreciate the service of our volunteers, EMTs tremendously. They're a great support to the community. And the work you do, we really appreciate and value tremendously.
Mr. Bureau. So this evening I just wanted to provide the board with information about this new tax exemption for your consideration. It is a tax exemption that would affect volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers within our district. This is part of chapter six seventy of the laws of twenty twenty-two, which were just signed into law by the governor in December of twenty twenty-two. It amends the current real property tax law four sixty-six, which provides a more administratively streamlined and standardized process. So this exemption allows for an up to ten percent property tax exemption of assessed value for eligible volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers within our district. It is available to all taxing jurisdictions, meaning towns, counties, villages, school districts. This is the idea of this tax exemption came about in recognition of our current volunteers, not only to recognize our current volunteers and retain them, but also to recruit new members. In order for a volunteer to be eligible for this tax exemption, they the property must be their primary residence. They must own the property, has to be their primary residence. And it has to be located within the jurisdiction served by the fire company or the fire department. So within our district. The board would need to consider volunteers need to have a minimum of two to five years of service. That's the baseline. So that decision would need to be made. And once, once a a tax exemption decision is made, the process is that the volunteer, the individual volunteer has to complete an application and then has to have their service certified by the authority having jurisdiction. Now, this could be the board of the commissioner of fire chiefs. I have to look to my for the technical terms, the commissioner of fire chiefs, as well as the ambulance agencies. But that service would be certified. And then they take that to the town assessor and the assessor adjusts the roles. Additional benefits in this tax exemption allow for a permanent tax exemption for a volunteer who has more than twenty years of service and the district, the property remains their primary residence within the district. It can also be extended to the surviving spouse of a light of a volunteer who has served at least twenty years in the in the vol- in the service and the the surviving spouse does not remarry. And then it can also be extended to the surviving spouse of a volunteer with at least five years of service who has been killed in the line of duty. As long as this surviving spouse does not remarry. So what type of an impact does this have? On the school district itself, it has no fiscal impact because this exemption does not impede us from from our ability to levy taxes, levy and collect taxes. What what does happen is that the overall exemption decreases the volunteer's assessed value. So therefore the balance of the levy then is spread out amongst the remaining taxpayers in the district. So in order to give you an idea of how this this exemption is calculated, I wanted to provide you with some information. Our school district covers six towns. We have properties in six towns and we have twenty-one first responder agencies within our six towns. Keep in mind that in the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three, our total assessed home that our assessed value for homestead properties is one point nine billion dollars. In the twenty-one first responder agencies, it is estimated that there are approximately two hundred and twenty eligible volunteers. Now, this information came to me from a regional battalion chief in the area who contacted all of the first responder agencies and got an estimate of the nu- of the number of volunteers that own property. Okay, so if we assume that all two hundred and twenty eligible volunteers apply for this exemption and we assume that they all have a full valued property of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I want to show you how this is calculated. So in order to calculate the tax bill, what we do is we take the full value of the property. We multiply it by the equalization rate. The equalization rate is provided to us by the Department of Taxation and Finance, New York State. And that's to us, that's to account for the differences in the way towns assess values because they all do it a little bit differently. We multiply, we divide that by a thousand, a thousand, and then we multiply it by the tax rate. So to give you a specific calculation of how this is done, in the current year in East Green Bush, the tax rate is sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents per one thousand dollars of assessed value. The equalization rate in the town of East Green Bush is eighty-eight point two five percent. So assuming again that the full value of the property is two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we would multiply it by the equalization rate and come up with an assessed value of two hundred twenty thousand, six twenty-five. We take that assessed value divided by the one thousand dollars, multiply it by the sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents to come up with a tax bill of three thousand five hundred seventy-nine dollars in this example. So with the exemption, the calculation would be you would take the two hundred twenty thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars of assessed value, subtract ten percent, as I said, of the board can decide anywhere up to ten percent. In this example, I'm saying ten percent to come up to an adjusted assessed value of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, five sixty-two divided by the thousand, multiplied by the sixteen twenty-two. So the adjusted tax bill with the exemption would be three thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars. So this is a savings for a volunteer of approximately three hundred fifty-eight dollars. And based on the information I received, there are approximately ninety volunteers in the town of East Green Bush. So multiplying that by ninety, it would come up to a total exemption in the town of East Green Bush of a little over thirty-two thousand dollars. With that in mind, and please keep in mind that we're making a lot of assumptions here in order to provide you with information as to how this exemption is calculated. But with that in mind, I took a look at all six of our towns and I with the full value of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, I multiplied it by the exact of the equalization rate, which is different by town. So I came up with tax bills. As you can see, I have the rates there per one thousand dollars of assessed value. The next column shows what the tax bill would be for a property of this value. And then the next column is what the tax, what the tax bill would be with the exemption applied to it. And then what the the savings would be per individual property and then multiplied by the approximate number of volunteers that would be eligible for this exemption. So the purpose in doing this is to show you how the exemption is calculated. But so that you have a sense, this is not the exact number, the eighty thousand, six hundred seventy. What this represents is just based on the assumptions that I made and how it is calculated. So it could be more, it could be less. But my point in showing you this is so that you know that it's probably not going to be millions of dollars. It's probably on the smaller side. So our next steps, in order to have this exemption be effective on the tax bills for twenty-three, twenty-four, the a resolution, the the district would need to hold a public hearing, basically provide this type of information. And then the board would need to pass a resolution. Within that resolution, you'd have to make a decision of what percentage the exemption would be up to ten percent. What would be the years of required, years of service required, anywhere from two to five years is the base amount. Whether you would include the additional benefits of the exception and that would be for the surviving spouse of us of a volunteer that served more than twenty years or the surviving spouse of a volunteer who served five years and and was killed in the line of duty. So the the caveat to this is that in order, if the board wanted to have an exemption applied to the twenty-three, twenty-four school tax bills, which go out September, that resolution, public hearing resolution need to take place prior to March first.
Not on March first? It couldn't be March first, it has to be prior to?
By March first. And and the reason I say by March first is because the volunteers themselves have to have their applications into the assessor's office by March first. So
Wow, that's tight.
It's very tight. It's very tight. It's just so that you have full information, I I discussed this with other business officials within the Questar region as well as I contacted Rensselaer County, the town of East Green Bush, the town of North Green Bush, the town of East Green Bush and North Green Bush, they are discussing it. This will apply to their twenty twenty-four taxes. Their bills go out in January. So 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 there's a little bit of, you know, consideration there. I talked with school districts within Questar region, including Wyandotte, Skodak, Rensselaer and Avro Park. They are all discussing it right now. Avro Park is the furthest in that I believe they have possibly scheduled their public hearing. It has been passed by one school district that I know of in the region and that is that one, um, school district. It has also been recently passed by Rensselaer County, Green County and the North Green Bush Fire District. So that's the information I have on it. It's a lot of information for you to consider. I think really the idea is that this is an exemption that recognizes the volunteer service within our district. And that while that eighty thousand dollars is not exact and specific, this is how the exemption is calculated. And I expect it to be a smaller effect rather than a really large effect. Are there any questions or comments?
There's a quick comment before the board deliberates on this. Districts are calling Linda Waager because this presentation is so precise and asking for her presentation. Very, very deliberate, very easy to understand. Presentation is something that can be very, very complicated. So I just want to compliment you on the super job of explaining, getting this together in a hurry.
And I know that was a quick turnaround time too. So John, he has comments.
Linda, the line of duty death, is that the state law of five years of service or is that, where did that come from?
That is within this current legislation.
That's kind of strange. You get dusted at work and they're not gonna, whether it's one day or five or whatever, doesn't make any sense to me.
No, they're allowing us to pick two to five, but then they put a
That's what I'm saying. This doesn't make, whether you get it on day one or day ten, it's no different. My thing.
Other comments?
How do we do it?
Yeah, I would definitely support this. I know one of the big things will be figuring out the timing because I think our next meeting is March eighth, right?
Well, we definitely have to do a special.
Yeah, we have to do a special.
A hearing and then a board meeting at the same time.
Yeah.
Soon. So I I support it as well. Just comments. I think the ten percent is appropriate. I would like to see the five years. I think there's a commitment to the volunteer on on the timing, but that's up for discussion, I think. The one question I had is, you know, when does a piece about the certification and the application from the the fire commissioner now? Is there a threshold when you like, if you sign up for a volunteer firefighter or your emergency responder, do you have to fill certain requirements to be considered someone who has done the hours necessary to be, you know, considered, it's like you don't just sign up. So and then you're a volunteer, you've got to be training, but you haven't been able to on calls or things like that. And is there a minimum that requires a certification? Do we know?
Well, I can tell you the legislation, the base service years are two to five years of actual service and that is and I attended a webinar that was presented by Fascinating Fire Association, the state of New York Firefighters Association. And they said it is service calls. You have to be going on calls. So
So the basic minimum number of service calls.
I don't know that there's a minimum number of service calls that you have to be going on calls and
You'd be have to act it basically, they'd be active.
So we do have in our office, our audience and one that is one of our employees. So I'm going to ask Mr. Dan Garib if he can give a little more clarification on that.
Yeah, maybe supportive of, I just want to know some of the like pieces that
Yeah, no problem at all.
Qualification.
This really has come out in a very short timeframe. So just that the fact that the Board of Education is discussing this and considering it. I know I I speak on behalf of a lot of volunteers. It's very much appreciated and the time that Linda put into this. You have to be an active volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker. The authority having jurisdiction that would determine that would be the governing body of that taxing district. So in the case of a school district, it would be those fire districts within the school district, the Board of Fire Commissioners. If it's a town fire department, like a fire protection district, it would be the town board. What would be considered an active volunteer? Are they covered by the FBL, Volunteer Fireman's Benefit Law? Are they getting their OSHA physical? Are they eligible to attend training? Are they eligible to attend fire calls? This is not meant to be and not that we don't value our people. I've been a member over thirty-five years and active member. I sit on the Board of Fire Commissioners, but it's not meant to be, okay, we thank you for your service twenty years ago. We haven't seen you in five years and now you're back. Here's your tax exemption. This is for people that are currently We haven't seen you in five years, and now you're back. Here's your tax exemption. This is for people that are currently serving. Does that help?
Yes, and so in the paperwork that the volunteers would have to fill out, they would have to come to the fire. Board of Commissioners, and you would have to sign that they are in fact.
Correct.
A participating active member.
Correct.
That paperwork then goes down to the town hall and is given to the assessor who makes all the adjustments.
Correct. So for example, I live in the town of North Green Bush, in the East Green Bush School District. I would fill out my form, the forms are provided by the state. You fill it out, I turn it into the assessor, and then depending upon where you live, so in my case. The East Green Bush School District passes this, it would be that exemption. Rensselaer County has already passed it. If any other government entities pass it, then they would. Town of North Green Bush, you could even look at like the library district. This is just all come about so fast. And if you don't mind, if I'd like to comment on Mr. Dunn's comment, I agree with you a hundred percent. This is in the legislation. So there's not a lot of. Choice, you know, in that, like it.
I would encourage your groups to lobby that and have that portion change.
There is lobbying going on with a lot of the statewide organizations regarding that. Factor and also really the the deadline. But you don't know where that's going to land. So you know, the big choices are, you know, the two to five years of service and. The up to the ten percent.
And the only question I have, Linda, is, so I looked at some of those numbers. And I look at the town of East Green Bush having ninety volunteers. It seems awful low. The amount of fire departments we have in town, East Green Bush, Clinton Heights, Bethany Keeter, Ruin Rescue Squad. Just ninety seems like an awful low number. So that's not total volunteers, that's just total property owners.
Right, it's volunteers that would be eligible based on their years of service.
Okay, thank you.
And then they also have to look at the age. So some fire companies, you can join at sixteen. But you have to be eighteen, property owner, primary residence.
Makes sense. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Good to have a person on staff here, and I see a, I think a couple folks here that are.
Too, I think it's it's long time coming.
You need a motion?
No, we just need to set a date for the public hearing and a resolution. So we gotta get a quorum for the public hearing and resolution by February twenty.
I would make myself a.
Do it here.
It's a Tuesday, the twenty eighth.
It's it's kind of close.
Right, if we, because.
It's the day after, we get the break, I think it's Monday or Tuesday.
If we did it on the twenty eighth, that means people have that paperwork came by the first, right?
Happening though is that the board is, well, the board is discussing it. We do, we are required to have the public hearings, so. In anticipation of of this passing with the the board. People could be filling out their paperwork and and getting it ready and.
Big line at the town hall? So if people can look at their calendars, and maybe. Jeannie can poll, Monday or Tuesday, twenty seven, twenty eighth, what's better availability?
I just want to mention that on the twenty seventh, just so everyone is aware, I believe there is a. Mr. Simon, can you help me? Basketball event.
Yeah, I won't invite the board, I don't think, unless you want to go to the East Green Bush Community Night at Seattle Basketball.
Uh, scenic grads here.
We would have to reschedule that.
Come here. This is gonna be quick, right? It's not like we're expecting any resistance or.
Twenty seven, fourth.
Should have spoke to him.
Twenty seven, that Monday would be better.
Monday, maybe? What time? Six thirty? Seven?
I was gonna say, I would air it earlier, because I have something else, but.
Monday, 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 Monday. The twenty seventh? We'll have a quorum, one, two, three, four, five, six, plus Emily and Michelle.
Twenty seven, at what time?
Six. Six P M.
The public hearing first, right at six o'clock.
Yeah, here, in the Morton. So we advertise the public hearing scheduled, and then we'll have the vote, resolution to approve them.
So then, do we have to decide now about the different parameters?
Well, the board will need to decide prior.
For the resolution, right? Let's get some feedback to me on that, if that's okay, and then we'll.
Two years, ten percent.
Two years, ten percent. Okay, two years, two percent, okay. I'll go with the group. Okay, thank you. And then the other ones? No issues? L O D D, I'm disappointed it's at least five years, but it's pretty nasty. I don't like that, but we'll go with each item.
Yes.
Each item? Two years, ten percent, include the exemption for surviving spouse, L O D D, surviving spouse. Okay. And it would be, I hope it does what it's supposed to do, retain and recruit.
Yeah.
Help the services.
I hope that helps.
Well, we should be willing to pay people for what we're not willing to do.
Amen, yep.
So thank you.
All right, so that.
I can be of any assistance to the board. I've been doing forty years of real property. I do have a copy of the local law that I passed last night. So you would have boil it for me to help. Off my shoulders.
Sure. Thank you, drop it off.
One March first, you're all just gonna storm the office with.
Thank you for attending this evening. We're we're glad to be able to support you. So if you want to drop that off and. Give it to Linda, she'd be glad to appreciate the help, I'm sure.
Spread the word to your fellow firemen that. Get their paperwork ready.
Yeah, that we're going to support it.
Okay, thank you very much for the feedback on that one. Right on schedule, rather businessy, three, five. So I'm gonna go through these and expect a lot of. Comment, program for risen children with disabilities, questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Kathleen, second John, all those in favor? E G T M O A. This is in regards to the appendix D funding. We talked about this previously, any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Joanne, second Jennifer, all those in favor? Textbook requests, let me read through this, it seems pretty. Do I add to this?
No, I did discuss this previously from the minutes from our CCS meeting back.
We are on the textbooks, like requests, need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, second Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. And then the new course proposal, which we heard, the Fit for Life. I think it seems like a nice program for kids, another alternative for them to do that.
There is one question, and I do support it, and I hope it 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 can start as soon as possible. Oh, because I think it is is another choice for for some of our students. But from Mr. Jones and his group, they talked about twenty pieces of equipment and a new garage door being installed to. So make it a ease of going from one to another. So, and we're not looking to start this in the fall twenty three. Right? We're starting our budget plan. Do we have an estimated cost as to what twenty two pieces of equipment are going to cost? In the possibility of a garage door? The garage door is still under review, it will not come about next year. We were gonna, we're gonna consider the pros and cons of putting that in there. What happens if you need to use the facility as a gym? So they've asked for that. We're adding that to the list of things that we would consider in the capital project, but that would not be a budgeted item for next year. We do have a number on the equipment. Budget, we think it's a little low that they submitted, and I don't know if you know.
And that's why with that budget planning.
We have that number.
Support it, I hope it gets it. I just don't want an open checkbook.
Right, no, it's about.
We had an estimate of thirty five thousand for all of the pieces of equipment that they.
For twenty two. I mean, just.
So we'll form up those numbers, and generally speaking, we'll do the course proposal.
Four bikes, four ski things, four rollers and two. So thirty five thousand dollars?
Do you think it's?
However, they have been talking with the suppliers. Very comfortable on the pieces of equipment that they show, that we can get all of those pieces of equipment for thirty five thousand dollars.
Cool, let's hope it through.
And let me, yeah, turn it into the price.
I didn't know that part until tonight, because I was skeptical about the price, but now they're they're not motorized, so I can see why it might be less expensive than I thought I tried. I mean, even in that range.
Need a motion to approve that? Of course, John, second Mark, calls in favor? It's approved.
Thank you very much.
So staying on the agenda, we have some good reports. Start with Marissa.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vino. Our appendix D committee is still committed to meeting quite routinely during the twenty two, twenty three school year. At our meeting on February sixth, we had invited Scott Halliday to come to our committee meeting. And discuss the musical choral director. That specific position has not been filled by an internal music teacher in a number of years. We are very fortunate to have. Someone within the community come and assist us with that, and she's been a wonderful help, but we were just really looking into the future. When, you know, that person may potentially not be interested in serving in that role. Looking at some creative ways to gain the interest of some of our music teachers. So we looked at really that flexibility component and potentially starting practices later. And having that up for discussion with our music department. We also discussed. A new club proposal that was brought to our committee. This club proposal is called the Belltop. TV Morning Program, and it would provide our fifth grade students with the opportunity to develop presentation and communication skills. By presenting the news each morning, during the morning announcements. The Belltop TV Morning Program would be streamed through a Google Meet to all classrooms. And it would provide our fifth grade students opportunities to discuss what is on the menu for lunch, the weather, go over birthdays. And they would also be tying it to a word of the week that would be consistent with a character education focus. So our committee is recommending approval for that unpaid club, and that is on the consent agenda tonight. Anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Marissa. Linda, I think you had quite a bit to this evening. And Jeff, you have a couple things.
Very briefly, our advocacy committee met on Monday to develop some topics and proposals to bring. To the legislature, we're traveling to the legislature tomorrow to meet each of our respective representatives. We're bringing three students, myself, Swager, and a parent along with Mr. Weg, not here anymore, but. The topics will be thankful for the foundation aid, hoping that that will be sustained, the universal pre K issue in terms of seeking. More to be able to reimburse for student, student meals, that's a proposal that's being also endorsed by. The New York State School Boards Association to continue funding free school breakfast. That is not being approved by the federal government right now. School safety, continuing to be concerned about school safety. Giving districts either resources or flexibility to hire more school resource officers, student mental health. And career and technical education and P tech. A lot of students in current technical education, we have new students in the P tech program over the last two years. The amount of reimbursement that we get for tuition for C T E. It's a complicated formula, which really based on the cost of a teacher, that that cost comes from nineteen ninety five. So that adjustment hasn't occurred since nineteen ninety five, and it would be helpful for districts that are having students participate in C T E if we would. It would drive more BOSI's aids back to the district if the formula could be adjusted. So we're excited about going down there. I think we're gonna give, oh, Mr. Garib, I left Mr. Garib out. Mr. Garib is coming with us as well. And. Yeah, I think they're prepared for four people, I don't know if they can, but. But should be a good experience for our students. They're gonna talk about courses that they really liked and valued. While they were in school, there, some of them are, one of the students is prepared to talk about the student meal issue. They're ready to talk about the pre K. We also have teacher and principal evaluation, which is under consideration at the state. We'd like to see complete local control over that teacher and principal evaluation process, and so some of our folks will speak to that as well. Other committee we have going on, I gave each of you a copy of the book. That we are going to be reading as a school district and a community, one district, one community, one book. You have a copy of Elephant in the Room, no excuse for not reading it, participating with us now. We're gonna launch this on March first. We've had a committee that's been working on several activities that we're going to be doing. In all of the schools, not only reading this book, but also some fun ways to. Promote literacy. We're gonna have student announcements on every morning and asking quiz quiz questions about the book. We have a calendar of the chapters so that people can read on the same pace, which will lend itself to discussion. We have. Teachers and staff members are gonna be reaching out to community businesses to locate. One of the main characters is Vida, who is an elephant. We have a large stuff element or two, elephant or two. That be located in various business. So if you go to Hannaford's, in your spot, Vida. You come back to your school and you put your name on a little tag, you place it on the bulletin board for Elephant in the Room, and you might be eligible for. A prize of some kind, just to kind of generate enthusiasm. We actually heard back from the author, I emailed the author. Who is Holly Goldberg Sloan. She is meeting with us on Monday, when we get back from break. To plan either a guest reader event or just to talk about the book. Likely virtually, she's in, she's in California, but we reached out to her and she didn't respond, and her response was that she'd be honored to do it. It's coming together very nicely. Linda has ordered. Close to five thousand copies of the book, and community organizations are helping us fund it. I met with the Quanis Club last night. They are gonna give us a donation towards some of the books. Rotary Club is considering a donation, the East Green Bush Education Foundation is considering a donation, so.
In Hannaford.
In Hannaford. So it's coming together, and the purpose of this is to just promote unity and community. After a very challenging time for our schools. We have a website link that's already established on our website. It says one, one district, one community, one book. You go on there, you can read about the program. We're gonna be launching it again. And there's a link if you want to sign up to be a guest reader. So if you want to be involved as an organization, you sign up on your interest list. There's another spot that you sign up if you want to be a guest reader. You can be a guest reader either virtually. And record it ahead of time, so it can be used at any time. You can, you can specify your preference for a school. If you'd like to come in and be an in-person guest reader, and we're gonna be collecting that information, and each building has somebody. On our committee who's gonna help to coordinate that. And Mark is using Parents Square and be sending out a lot of different information. And Mark is using Parents Square and be sending out a lot of different information. I've been giving my assignments from the committee, so I have to remember what my assignments are. Tomorrow I have to record an introduction to this, to the faculty and staff. They've already received a letter about it. The community organizations have received a letter about it. We're going to distribute that video by Monday. We start it on March first, and then on March first at nine fifteen, similar to what we do on nine eleven, I'm going to do an all district public announcement, kicking off the program, encouraging everybody to be involved in it. And there are different things that Mark is going to update the community on as we go along. So should be very, very exciting and fun and and to bring everybody together around literacy. So you will get a calendar of the chapters that you have to read. The longest chapter, I think, is ten pages, and the shortest chapter might be four pages. It's an easy read.
Man says she's going to read ahead and be a spoiler.
Moving on the agenda, oh, is there any more comments?
I'm the advocacy. I'm sorry, I should have said this earlier. Can we get something up on the website talking about what the topics are that you're going to discuss? Like the pre-K, Emily, you know, is very interested, is talking about there's a large interest in this in the community. So they not only hear from you and the small group that can go, but we can encourage other people. You know, maybe give a couple of topics, give a couple.
That'd be great. Yes, we could definitely do that.
Yeah, contact information and maybe have one of the students, you know, talk about their day advocating for the school district. Encouraging other people to also.
It's a great idea. Definitely do that.
Thank you.
Don McDonald is coming to the, I think he's coming by chance, yes. And I believe we've rescheduled the STEM high school kids P-Tech to come that day too. That would be good as well.
Excellent. Any other comments? Moving on to the motions, we have none. All business board members, anything that we missed? Moving on consent agenda, we have items A through a lot, J. There are a couple of things on the agenda that are of import. So any comments or questions at this time on the consent agenda? Seeing none, need a motion to approve. Joanne, second. Question, Mark, all those in favor? So I want to congratulate Linda on her upcoming retirement. We have a couple of retirements there. We want to congratulate them on the decision. Thank you, Linda, for everything and, you know, presentations are always spot on. The amount of information we get is just tremendous, and it really helps, this is board members. When we have someone such high quality and committed to the work in the district, and we appreciate everything you've done. It wins the party. All right, did we vote on that? Yes, we did. So we're good there on the consent agenda. And again, congratulations to all retirees. I did want to mention too, thank you for the backpack program, the PBA, the Goth Dress Down Days, tremendous support for the backpack program as always. Addendums, I have none, no business board members? Question? Oh, sorry. Any new business? No, no, okay. All the forum, who's left? Administrators are here. And then word forum, I'll start my rate, Joanne. Jennifer has stepped out. Mark?
Thank you, Linda.
Come on in, the water's fine.
We do not have need for an exemption this evening? Okay, we had it earlier today. So without any motion to adjourn, Kathleen, second, Joanne, all those in favor? True, Jennifer is a. Every night, everybody, thanks, everyone.